Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for Tuesday, May 4, 2021. Council will meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the city's channel and live stream on the city's channel, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call, will clerk please take the role?
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Laval?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith? Reverend Burgess, Chair?
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. As we join from our remote locations, please put your hand on your heart or face the flag or think about the flag as we recite the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have a number of proclamations to be read in the record. We have four from Councilwoman Smith. You can read them all together, please.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1454. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare April 28, 2021 to be Workers Memorial Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 1455, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 2 through May 7, 2021, to be Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Pittsburgh. And Bill Number 1456, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare March 25, 2021, to be Honorable Evelyn D. Richardson Women's History Month Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 1457, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare April 29, 2021, to be Allegheny County Democratic Black Caucus Day, Evelyn D. Richardson Springtime of Fear Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Bill Number 1459, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 4, 2021, to be Duncan Perkwood Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you very much. We have four from Councilwoman Smith, one from me. I'll take one motion for all five proclamations. Is such a motion to approve?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor, send a five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. The proclamations are approved. That takes us to a will council from Councilwoman Smith.
Council, Council President Kelsmith presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby express its support for the PRO Act, which stands to greatly increase economic opportunity in America and empower workers through the promotion and expansion of collective bargaining. And be it further resolved that a copy of this bill of council shall be presented to the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, send a five by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. That, I think, exhausts our, our will of councils and our proclamation. The next order of business is public comment. Like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted. You will be given three minutes. Please start off with your name and neighborhood for the record. I have only one, Registered Speaker, Ikahana How Makina. Are you with us this morning? Ikahana How Makina, are you with us this morning? If not, if you appear sometime during our agenda toward the end, perhaps we will hear from you later. The next order of business then will be presentation of papers. Councilman Coghill, for myself, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. I think there's another new papers. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1426, Resolution for the Amending Resolution of N908 effective January 1, 2011 as amended, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2011 Capital Budget and the 2011 CDBG Program and Approving the 2011 through 2016 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Slow Failure Remediation by $9,476.54 and Increasing James Street Steps by $9,476.54. Bill Number 1427, Resolution for the Amending Resolution Number 796 of 2013, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2014 Capital Budget and the 2014 CDBG Program and Approving the 2014, 2014 through 2019 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing West Ohio Street Bridge by $2,582.84 and Increasing James Street Steps by $2,582.84. Bill Number 1428, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnership Program to Provide Funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project. The grant proposal includes a request of $100,000 with a local match of $33,000 to be funded from the 2022 City of Pittsburgh's Operating Budget in the Form of In-Kind Work and $67,000 funded from the 2022 City of Pittsburgh Capital Budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $200,000. Bill Number 1429, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Issuing of a Warrant to the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy in an Amount of $25,000 in Full and Final Payment for the Street Tree Planting in the City on behalf of the Tree Vitalize Pittsburgh Partnership. Bill Number 1430, Resolution Granting unto Demetrius Pantrinos for their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense two new projecting signs at 1800 Smallman Street in the 2nd Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1431, Resolution Granting unto Dicio Nicola, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new awning at 2031 Penn Avenue, 2nd Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1432, Resolution Granting unto Urban Pittsburgh Downtown Hotel Company, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense two new projecting signs at 405 Wood Street, 1st Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1433, Resolution Granting unto New Alliance Federal Credit Union, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new canopy at 3709 Butler Street in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1434, Resolution Granting unto PNC Bank Squirrel Hill, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a projecting sign at 5810 Fourth Avenue in the 14th Ward, 5th Council District. Bill Number 1435, Resolution Granting unto Christina Jersey, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an enclosed porch along the side of her house at 5924 Elgin Street, 11th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1436, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Transportation Demand Management Project through the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program. Bill Number 1437, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 221 of 2020, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund in an Amount of $443,659 to decrease the Grant Award to $100,000 to provide funding for city side street skate improvements. Bill Number 1453, Resolution for the Amending Resolution Number 772 as amended, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program to Correct the Accounts that $20,000 is being transferred from for the Beachview Ward Memorial Sidewalks Deliverables.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Your Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1438, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 6629-6633 Numberlin Street Project located at 6629 through 6633 North Numberlin Street.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1439, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Human Resources and Civil Service to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contracts with Community College of Allegheny County for the Purpose of Providing Customized Application Preparation Training for Public Safety Positioned Applicants and Services Associated with the Civil Service Exam Preparation and Training, Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $55,125 over three years.
Thank you very much. It takes us to Councilman Laval, Chair of Financial Law.
President?
Thank you.
Councilman Laval presents Bill Number 1440, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the American Rescue Plan Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit Into and Expenditures from Said Trust Fund. Bill Number 1441, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Accept a Donation from the Buncher Company in an Amount of $140,955.67 for a Portion of the Costs Associated with Installing a Traffic Signal at 15th Street and Smallman in the Strip District. And further amending Resolution Number 647, Effective December 23, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CDBG Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Smallman Street Reconstruction by $140,955.67.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1442, Resolution Adopting the Allegheny County Hazard Mitigation Plan as the Official Hazard Mitigation Plan of the City. Bill Number 1443, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 632, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City into an amended agreement with Purvis Systems for Installation of a New Fire Station Alerting System and Related Support Services. Said Agreement shall be in a Form Approved by the City Solicitor and shall not, shall, and shall be at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $2,763,827.51. Bill Number 1444, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquencies, Community Violence Intervention, to Fund Patrol Officer Participation and Related Activities in the City's Youth Connections Program in an Amount Not to Exceed $125,316.80. Bill Number 1445, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter on behalf of the City into a Grant Agreement with Every Town Support Fund in an Amount of $200,000 for Expansion of the City's Gun Violence Prevention Program.
Councilman O'Connor, you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could please waive the rules on Bill 1442 so that that bill can appear on tomorrow's agenda. Thank you.
So moved. All those in favor, send a five by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Thank you very much. It will appear on tomorrow's agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1446, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a One-Year Agreement with Zen City with the Option to Renew for Another Year. Zen City is an SAAS, which analyzes data from social media, city hotlines, and other relevant sources, and provides local government stakeholders with detailed, real-time insights about citizens' sentiment during COVID-19. The Mayor's Office requested this tool as part of its ongoing COVID-19 response. The cost will not exceed $30,000 in the first year. Bill Number 1447, Resolution, Amending Resolution 30 of 2020, a Resolution Amending an Agreement with E-Dark Technologies LLC for Licensing Services and Maintenance and Support Services for a Three-Year Contract Extension at an Additional Cost Not to Exceed $91,242.51. Bill Number 1460, Resolution Proclaiming Pittsburgh City Council's Intent to Introducing Or Place and Limitations on the Use of Single-Use Plastic Bags Within the City.
Need a, you understand you have a motion, Councilwoman Strasburg?
Yes, motion to waive the rules of council so that Bill 1460 appears on tomorrow's agenda.
Second.
I'll be moving in second. All in favor, send a five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. It will appear on tomorrow's agenda. That takes us to Council Ben Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1448, Resolution Approving a New Institutional Master Plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX in Zoning Article II, Chapter 905 and Chapter VII. University of Pittsburgh named Institutional Master Plan dated April 2021 on Property Zone, EMI, Educational Medical Institution District 4th and 5th Wards, Council Districts Number 3, 6, and 8. Bill Number 1449, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of City Planning to Receive $7,750 for Grant Funding per Grant Amendment between the City and the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources executed 5/19/2020 to Aid in Obtaining Title Reports for the South Side Park Master Plan and Further Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Title Wade in an Amount of $15,500 for Title Searches of South Side Park. Bill Number 1450, Resolution, Amending Resolution 350 of 2020 to Authorize the Entering into a Leasing by the Department of City Planning for Display of Art in Connection with a Professional Services Agreement with Boom Concepts and/or Bloomfield Garfield Corporation.
Mr. Wilson, I think you have a motion.
Yes, motion to waive Rule 8 of 1450 so it appears on tomorrow's agenda.
Second.
I'll be moving in second. All those in favor, send a five by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. It will appear on tomorrow's agenda. And then on behalf of Councilwoman, there are two things. One is an appointment. We'll take them separately. And one is a communication. The appointment first. Madam Clerk?
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1451, Resolution Appointing Amy Casey as a Board Member of the Equipment Leasing Authority for Eight Terms Inspired April 17, 2022. Chief Casey will serve the remainder of the term where his seat vacated by Guy Costa, who resigns.
What is the will of council? To approve this, or do you want to hold for some hearing?
Motion to approve.
Two or second? Any other conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, send a five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. We have a communication from the Controller.
Bill 1452, Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, Submitting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the City dated December 31 of 2020.
I need a motion to read, receive, and file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, send a five by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. All right. Seeing that the President has joined us, I will now turn the meeting over to President Teresa Kelsmith. She'll take us to, through reports of, for final action.
Thank you, Reverend, very much for cheering again. Councilman Laval, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Laval presents Bill Number 1421, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for April 28, 2021, within affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1413, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 400, Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Public Safety, Finance, and/or Public Works to Enter into an Agreement for Acquisition of Real Property and Execution of Related Agreements for the Site of the Former U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs Facilities, known as the Highland Drive Medical Center, located along the East Side of Washington Boulevard, for Construction of New Facilities and Renovation of Existing Facilities for Emergency Management and Law Enforcement Uses by City's Department of Public Safety.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. It moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1422, Report of the Committee on Public Works for April 28, 2021, within affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1395, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities' Grant Program to Provide Funding for the Construction of a New Park Building in the Robert E. Williams Memorial Park. The grant proposal includes a request of $500,000 with a local match of $997,170 payable from the City's 2020 and the 2021 Capital Budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an Agreement and Expenditures not to exceed $1,497,170. Bill Number 1403, Resolution for the Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 675 of 2008, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2009 and the 2009 through 2013 Capital Improvement Program to Change the City Farm's Deliverables from Brookline Only to Brookline in District 7.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. They're finally passed. And moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Councilman Wilson?
Madam President?
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1423, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for April 28, 2021, within affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1085, Witness Amending and Supplementing in the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code, Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 914, Parking, Loading, and Access by Adding a New, a New Section 91409J, Parking Access for Single-Unit Attached Residential Uses to Require Rear or Side Access to All Street Parking Spaces for Single-Family Attached Dwelling. Bill Number 1399, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the Implementation, Administration of the Housing Counseling Program and Related Costs in an Amount Not to Exceed $100,000.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. They're finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1424, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for April 28, 2021, within affirmative recommendation. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director. Bill Number 1398, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into a Contract and/or Agreement with Informing Design Inc. and/or Homeless Children's Education Fund to Provide for the Continued Operation of the Big Bird Online Application and Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $75,000.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Those in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. They're finally passed. It moves us on to our final committee of the day. Councilwoman Deb Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1425, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for April 28, 2021, within affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1396, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 129 McKee Street Commercial Property at 129 McKee Street.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Those in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval? Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have, that moves us to motions and resolutions, and I have a meeting, some meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May 5th, council will meet for the standing committees meeting at 10:00 a.m., chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Also tomorrow afternoon at 1:30, council will host a cable cast here, public hearing on bill 1372 and on a petition relative to the crisis of and reasons for forced mass displacement of Black Pittsburghers. And Councilman Burgess, are you cheering that?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Thank you. So we'll be chaired by Councilman Burgess. Please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning to register to speak at the council meeting and by 11:30 a.m. tomorrow morning to register to speak at the public hearing. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. Is there anything from members?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I would like to call for a post-agenda on the state of hospital workers in our city. COVID has undoubtedly uncovered, among other things, that the importance of hospital workers and the fact that they're all frontline workers in addition to being, in addition to nurses and doctors, and wanted to call a post-agenda to discuss that. Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? In discussion? All in favor? And we'll get that scheduled, Councilwoman. Anything else from members?
President Smith.
Councilman Burgess.
I sent, I think, members an email about this, but on yesterday, Councilwoman Lavelle and I announced the new Black Pittsburgh Matters webpage, which is now part of our city's website. You can access it through the main page and as its own icon, in that section, you will find policy statements, policy videos, and links to things like the Earn and Learn Program so that you'll find there a one-stop place for things that are particularly useful for African-American residents of the city and African-American communities. And so we'd like for you to share it with your constituents. It's not limited certainly to African-Americans, but all who are interested in equity. We'll find the site, that webpage, interesting and helpful. And I just want to, want to thank everyone's participation in making the city a city for all by making it a city where Black Pittsburgh matters.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other members? Okay, seeing none, I just would also ask Councilwoman Strasburger, can you call for a motion for a post-agenda related to tax collection in the city of Pittsburgh? We've had a lot of concerns, and you and I have spoken about this, Councilwoman Strasburger. And we did get a lot of answers as to why there's such a delay in the tax cashing the checks for the taxes. But I just want to say that I think we want to make sure that whatever we put in place is addressing whatever happens in the future. But I know that we're, I'm going to form a task force to work on this. But in the first, I'd like to call for the post-agenda. So could you call for a post-agenda for tax collection, Councilwoman?
Happily, yeah. A motion to hold a cable cast post-agenda to discuss tax collection in the city of Pittsburgh, specifically tax delays we've experienced in 2022.
Second with discussion, please.
Councilman.
Hi, Madam President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I've received the calls as well, too. And I was able to have a conversation with Chief Gilman. He was able to explain a lot of what the the problems are that are delaying the deposit of the checks. They were, we're not experiencing any delay in collecting. People are very happily sending their checks in. What we're having a problem with is the actual deposit of the checks. And people are genuinely concerned about whether or not their check will remain good after 120 days and will get deposited and all those kinds of things. So I agree. I would like to have a very open and honest discussion for the public at large to understand how and why this is happening and to alleviate any fear and any concern that people have about the deposit of their checks. It's very encouraging for me to hear just how diligent constituents are about wanting to make certain that their taxes are paid and that their checks are deposited, and they know that they are in good standing with the city. And that is incredibly encouraging to hear that from constituents. So I agree. I'm happy to be there and help in any way that I can to facilitate that. But it is a timely discussion and constituency deserves to understand how and why their their checks are taking as long as they're taking to be deposited. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Madam President, I just want to say thank you also. Our office did also have quite a few inquiries. And we're all eager to hear the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. And anything else from any other members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting? There's no absent members, correct?
So moved.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Being adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.